All right, I got seven o'clock. Would you please rise, take your hats off? Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have a quorum, and it is lovely to see this house packed. I can't believe all you people want to spend two hours with us, but we thank you. All right, approval of the minutes. Any additions, deletions? It's a pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
And a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second and a third. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, approved. Excuse me. Against, nays. Minutes are approved. On to our public meeting. The fire department badge pinning. Chief Morgan, let's get the show on the road.
Mr. President, esteemed members of the council, Madam Clerk Treasure, respected staff, friends, family, colleagues, coworkers, guests, this is my great line, here before you deny five people who have dedicated their lives to the Danville Fire Department and have successfully completed their probationary period. I thank the members of our department who received their badges, either close friends or family members. So bear with us as we get this started. The first person I'd like to introduce is, what we'll do, just so you know, so we've got a better idea, one group photo, obviously, when we do the badge pinning. And by council meeting, go out into the hallway to do family group photos and everything that they could conduct. First one I'd like to introduce is Charlie Crick. Charlie is a firefighter EMT assigned to A shift, pinned tonight by a longtime friend, David Cranford. I'd like to introduce Nikki Fanning. Nikki is a firefighter paramedic, assigned to the B shift, will be pinned tonight by her nephew Brendan Sparks. Next is Dakota Vane, firefighter EMT, assigned to C shift, pinned tonight by his wife Samantha. Next will be Tyler Lawrence. Tyler's firefighter EMT, assigned to A shift, pinned tonight by his fiancee, Hope I don't butcher this, Uppenberger. Did I say it right? Last but certainly not least is MJ Fairfield. MJ is a firefighter paramedic, assigned to A shift, pinned tonight by Tristan Fairfield, his own daughter.
Hi. Do you solve this? Eight. American. Under the appointment, the department, plead to the laws.
Plead to the laws.
In the Indiana, as to my skill and abilities.
If family members said yes would be willing to go ahead and... Those of you who don't know, this is a time honored tradition. It'll choke me up a little bit. The fire department is steeped on tradition. This is one of our most revered because this shows our excellence. While they're signing their oath of office, I know you can obviously tell everybody who's in a uniform is with the fire department, but I have a lot of firefighters here that aren't in uniform. Could y'all just raise your hand and everybody just take a look and see how many fire guys are in this room right now? It really is a testament to the support and the brotherhood that the... Very exciting to have all of you here tonight. We are off the...
Before you go, I'd like to offer my congratulations to the new recruits and my continuing admiration for those of you that are working every day to keep us safe. So, thank you very much. Who's on B shift? Lucky you. Okay? Congratulations. If you want to step out in the hallway for group pictures, or you are more than happy to stay here for the next two hours.
May I make a comment as well? I would like to congratulate you all as well, and I would also like to make the comment that the families of these officers have made a big commitment as well. I come from a fire family, and it's not just the officer, it's the whole family. So, thanks to you also.
Congratulations.
Oh, let's tear that up.
With accents. Just a thought. He's happy. He sees.
All that, Manny. Just the standards.
Okay. Well, we've got that going. That worked out very well. Let's go on to our request to reduce the speed limit and restrict parking. Mr. Akins, you want to start us off first?
Jennifer Fletcher. Are you the spokesperson for the group tonight, Jennifer? Okay. How about if I kick things off here and we'll go from there? We've had a petition presented by residents of Four Oaks subdivision, and that petition represents a reduction in speed limit to 20 miles per hour, and also established no parking on one side, Four Oaks. The current signage located in Four Oaks is in decorative signs of 25 miles per hour, and to be honest with you, we don't know who set that speed limit, but it's not within our codification. And typically, when you have a subdivision come in, the speed limit is addressed under the urban speed law of 30 miles per hour. So, it's not a big predicament that we're in, it's just that they want to go from 25 to 20. What we did was, we put together a radar speed study on traffic out there four days in a row, early morning hours, late afternoon hours, came up with some tabulations. Chief, I think you have some numbers on those, don't you? And the average speed limit of those motors was 26. It's two different, 7, 8, 8s. Those are what we... Out that, 8 to 9, it was 222 vehicles. Four Oaks addition, 31 of those, 13.96 percent, needed the speed limit, are you looking at? 4P to 6P, had 301 vehicles blocked, 35 of those. Finished that, 18.95. Over 36 miles an hour, 36, those fell. The 1, everything else was average speed. Also, response to the request for no parking, we took two of our public works vehicles applications, Four Oaks, along with our biggest truck, our biggest snowplow. Parking those vehicles on the side, across from each other, took the truck in question, drove it between those two vehicles. According to our superintendent of public works, there's room to spare for that, which means in the verse of public health seeking welfare, we can get school bus through there, get a fire truck through there, and we get a snowplow through there. So, we believe that the current parking structure situation is fine, and we believe that the speed limit is fine. Recommend approval of the petition. So, I'll entertain conversation from the people that's made the petition.
I do have some comments from some of the neighbors who are not able to be here concerning basically that beginning stretch where it kind of curves, and there were people parking on both sides of the street and coming through. There were concerns about kids playing and running out in the streets, and not everybody's going the 25 or the 20 miles an hour when both cars are on the sides of the streets. So, they were concerned about that, concerned about buses getting through, fire trucks getting through, and it's good to hear about that study. But it is hard to see around those curves, going through and then to the stop sign, and then turning whichever direction you're going. I think that was the main concern, safety of the kids, the line of sight, and also construction vehicles coming through, or sometimes they come through quite fast, and not stopping at those stop signs. And we're really worried that something's going to happen to one of the children. And rather than saying, in hindsight, we wish we would have come here and at least made you aware of some of the concerns, that we wanted to be proactive before something does happen to one of the kids. And I think that was our main concern, was the safety of it and the navigation. I do invite you to come through, and if you drive through some of those sections where there is parking on both sides, it is difficult to get through, and it is difficult to pull off to let somebody else come through.
That means people slow down, then?
Absolutely, which is a wonderful thing. I think they should, yeah, I agree.
Do you want to remove one of the sides? No parking on one side?
Say it again?
You have parking on two sides. You want to remove one side?
I don't know what the recommendation would be. I don't know what would be best, and that's why I'm glad you guys did that study. And to say parking on one side, then it wouldn't be fair to the homeowners who are there, because then they might have cars parking in front of their house when they don't utilize the street. So, I mean, for me to say that, I think would almost be kind of unfair, so I don't know what the solution is.
Is there any information? If we did take some of the parking away from that?
Actually, if you have parking now, that parking will act as a traffic. You've got to park car, you've got to slow down, and you've got to maneuver through it. So, you know, actually, it's good.
So, if you took one side, no parking, how's the cars to speed up then?
Good.
Yeah, and I think the concern was the kids coming through to park cars. It was worth something, concern comes in.
Jennifer's been great to work with, been very patient with me, because it was a month before I finally got around to her petition. What I'd like to remind Jennifer of, and anybody else out here, is that if you're worried about children playing, you need to keep an eye on your children.
I absolutely agree.
People will come here and say, "We want a children to play sign up on our street," you know, and basically, it's like we're giving carte blanche, posting that sign that says you can play in the street. So, we got away from that, and we've never put up another sign for that. I think staff and myself still feel firm that...
Gentlemen that had a moment to speak, are you from Four Oaks?
I'm in the advisory board also.
Would you step up to the podium and give your name?
My name is Mark Hutman, and two things. I am in support of dropping the speed limit, although I don't necessarily feel like it's necessarily a significant event. But I represent some folks who we've spoken to who can't be here tonight, who are not necessarily in favor of reducing one of the sides of parking because of the fact that that will create some issues for people who have guests, not being able to park on their side of the street, and will end up taking parking spaces potentially for other people. So, if this were to be under consideration, I was going to simply suggest that you might want to take a larger polling sample of the residents of Four Oaks before we were to go with that tactic. The base of this issue is the HOA has rules and restrictions regarding parking for more than a 48-hour period. We have little or no enforcement of said rules, and so people do it all the time. You're not supposed to park more than 48 hours, and then you have to be off the street for 48 hours. And there's little or no enforcement through the HOA, and so this was part of the discussions that we've had of trying to possibly make some restrictions to that. So, I just kind of wanted to present a little bit of an opposing side of some of the folks there. Thank you.
Any other comment from the staff, council? I want to know who decided if they get to post whatever speed limit they want, and it's not clear through us.
That's kind of an awkward position that we're in. It has to be through the developer, on the question.
Don't we check that for subdivisions, or was that an oversight on our part, too?
I would have to say it is.
Okay. Because Four Oaks has had another expansion coming in, and probably check that, too. All right, it's a pleasure of the council. Do we follow the suggestion of our staff and deny this petition at this point in time, or do we delve into it a little bit deeper?
My opinion is follow the recognition of staff. It looks like they've put a bit of effort into exploring the situation.
Motion?
Make that motion.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All of those in favor of accepting the staff's recommendation on Four Oaks signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you for your efforts. Before we get any further, I am remiss, we did have an executive session prior to our town council meeting. That was to receive information about and interview prospective employees and discuss the process thereof. And we also discussed a strategy of real property that the town may have an interest in. Sorry, I should have done that at the very beginning. Too excited about the badge pinning, to be honest. All right, next up is Miller Pipeline with Scarlett Jackson.
Scarlett Jackson is here representing Marathon Pipeline tonight. In your package, you should have seen a diagram. This location is directly, no, you know where it's at because you pinned to the public works department, directly south of the Assleen Tampas. Miller Pipeline has a rather large line that's going through there, and they're requesting purchase and easement through there. Legal has reviewed the document, it's called a pertinence and access road easement, and for that, the recommended price is $5,000. And Ray, do you have anything to say?
Harry, would that money then go into the general fund, or would that go to...?
Go into the general fund. Are there any pumping stations on there, or valves, or valve site?
It's a pleasure of the council. Give them a nice little 29 by 33 chunk of land for five grand?
I move we accept the proposal for $5,000 in access road easement.
Okay, I've got a motion to accept proposal and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Stratford Way pavement repairs, Banning and Ray Whitaker.
Oh, thank you.
I believe it was back in March that we came before the board to let them know that we were having trouble in Stratford Ridge, basically right off of US 36. It starts and goes up the hill, passes three cul-de-sacs there. Problem was, and still is, water underneath the blacktop. At that time, I said we needed drainage underneath the curb, and went to engineering, and they did a study, and they sent back a very, very detailed report that I have in my hand. They have come up with four options, and I believe those options are before you. One, yeah, option one was, yeah, well, option one was 454,00270, and that is an end dot 20-year performance. And alternative two is also an end dot 20-year for 365. In reviewing this, the only difference between alternative one and alternative two is one layer of fiber and two layers of fiber in between the stone. We're talking about $88,000 difference. Alternative three and four was not recommended for us to use by Banning Engineering. So, with that in mind, I don't like spending a lot of money unnecessarily, so my alternative would be option two for the board, and if you have any questions, Banning's standing here beside me.
The numbers that you gave us are slightly off of the ones that we have.
Okay, well, just make an order report or something.
Are they different?
Yeah, I'm Joe Miller with Banning. We met with staff with the first report, and then essentially what we did was take some staff recommendations. We wanted to put a little bit more contingency in there for some foundation repairs, so we added in some additional items, also modified some things for constructability, as far as the types of stone and stuff like that the GeoTech report gave back. So, and we wanted to give the thickest section possible, make sure we don't have to address this again with the first alternative, which I think is close to $500,000 is what that is. And we essentially threw the kitchen sink at it from that perspective. We took all the recommendations in the GeoTech report, and they technically recommended about a somewhere between 7.5 and 10% foundation repair. We said, hey, let's just assume we're going to have to foundation repair the whole thing. So, that's one of the big numbers that kind of jumped up in that change. We know if there's different funding mechanisms, certain items need to be out there just in case. And then to add on to Mr. Whitaker's discussion, the pavement section that was installed was also about 2.5 inches smaller than what it was intended to be per the original construction. That has also expedited some of that issue, made it a little bit harder to really go back and kind of maintain once it has started to degrade.
What kind of timeframe would you be looking at?
I think you'd be looking at six to eight weeks, probably, if you've got a good contractor during a summer dry time. I don't want school and other stuff like that going on.
Would that be something where you could do, say, the east side of the road, and then the west side of the road, and then you have to do the whole thing? How do you do that so you don't inconvenience the people in that area?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways to do it. One is you put in the contract documents that at least one lane of traffic has to be open, and the driveways have to be open for, you know, the people to get back and forth from the cul-de-sac and out, and you allow the contractor to figure that out. Looking at this, there's two options, really. You could do it on a length basis, I think. You know, you could go from here up to a certain point, stop it and allow access out this way, and then, you know, have an intermediate step here. So, you could chunk it off here, maybe in the middle, allow access for this cul-de-sac out on a temporary basis, and then get all your foundation repair, all your sub base, all your stone, everything in on here, and put the base down, and kind of tentatively open this back up, and then maybe do the same thing on this side where you're tearing everything out. And then you would have a temporary access this way and a temporary that way. Once you get it all done, go back and... And alternative two is also an end dot 20-year for 365. In reviewing this, the only difference between alternative one and alternative two is one layer of fiber and two layers of fiber in between the stone. We're talking about eighty, eight thousand dollars difference. Alternative three and four was not recommended for us to use by Banning Engineering. So with that in mind, I don't like spending a lot of money unnecessarily, so my alternative would be option two for the board. And if you have any questions, Banning is standing here beside me.
The numbers that you gave us are slightly off from the ones that we have.
Okay, well, just make, be an order reporter or something.
Are they different?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Joe Miller with Banning. We met with staff with the first report. And then essentially what we did was take some staff recommendations. We wanted to put a little bit more contingency in there for some foundation repairs, so we added in some additional items. Also modified some things for constructability. As far as the types of stone and stuff like that, the Geotech report gave back, so. And we wanted to give the thickest section possible and make sure we don't have to address this again with the first alternative, which I think is close to five hundred thousand dollars is what that is. And we essentially threw the kitchen sink at it from that perspective. We had, we took all the recommendations in the Geotech report. And they technically recommended about a, somewhere between seven and a half and 10% foundation repair. We said, hey, let's just assume we're gonna have to foundation repair the whole thing. So that's, that's one of the big numbers that kind of jumped up in that, in that change. We know if there's different funding mechanisms, certain, certain items need to be out there just in case, so. And then to add on to Mr. Whittaker's discussion, the pavement section that was installed was also about two and a half inches smaller than what it was intended to be per the original construction. That has also expedited some of that issue. It made it a little bit harder to really go back and kind of maintain once it had started to degrade.
What kind of timeframe would you be looking at?
I think you'd be looking at six to eight weeks probably, if you got a good contractor during a summer dry time. I don't want school and other stuff like that going on.
Would that be something where you could do, say, the east side of the road and then the west side of the road and then you have to do the whole thing? How do you do that so you don't inconvenience the people in that area?
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of different ways to do it. One is you put in the contract documents that at least one lane of traffic has to be open and the driveways have to be open for, you know, the people to get back and forth from the cul-de-sac and out. And you allow the contractor to figure that out. Looking at this, I, there's two options really. You could do it on a length basis, I think. You know, you could go from here up to a certain point, stop it and allow access out this way. And then, you know, have an intermediate step here. So you could, you could chunk it off here, maybe in the middle. Allow access for this cul-de-sac out on a temporary basis. And then get your, all your foundation repair, all your sub base, all your stone, everything in on here. And put the base down and kind of tentatively open this back up and then maybe do the same thing on this side where you're tearing everything out. But then you'd have a temporary access this way and a temporary that way. Once you get it all done, go back and then put the surface on once everything's all, all good. But there will be a significant inconvenience with this. There's no way around it. And I think in the contract documents, probably something the town's run up against before, you just have to put that in where driveway or roadway can't be shut down for a X amount of time, longer than.
So we're talking about the road that goes up the hill from CVS? Are we talking about road pushing out, flushing water out when the pressure gets in there? So what's happening behind that hill, water builds up in the earth, causes the pressure on the road and it breaks?
There, there is no drainage under it tall to take the water away from there.
So you're gonna do drainage now?
Yes.
Along the edge of the curb, there would have to be inch dug and drainage tile put in there and then the stone ordered to run to.
Yeah.
Gary, could you comment to that, please? Could you comment to the drainage there?
There's no stone on the road, basically. Get the movement, get pumping. First is they're so long and soft and play soils and I think put stone in it down the road and water.
So what it was made, was it made to cove to begin with?
Back in the eighties. That was put in. They dug that whole hillside out for around at that time. Remember right, the wall they built three times. Trying to build the wall, water behind it, shoved it over. So it was a hurry up, rush, get it done situation. Went in there, dumped dirt from where CVS is now, back across the road, up the hill, leveled it out. And that was when lime stabilization was brand new. There was like 20 loads of lime stabilization went on just that hill alone to hold it back long enough to get it paved. Get the curbs on it and get it paved. Ever drainage put under that road.
Funding mechanism for this one?
Funding mechanism, Julie said for me to tell you host, edit and grants, so.
Okay.
I'm sure we will.
There goes your lawnmowers.
No, no, I'm getting them first.
Your lawnmowers. Any other discussion from the council?
Any other questions?
Difference between alternative. Forty thousand, eight, is it a hundred and forty dollars, a thousand dollars worth of difference?
I can talk to that. So one of the other things that we did and the Geotech recommended, and we went back, I went back and forth a lot with the Geotech just to kind of, it's a kind, it's a complicated issue here because you have, you guys alluded to, you got the water coming in from the sides, but then you also have a very steep road coming down too. It's about a 7% grade. So there could be ways for that water to get around it anyway. So one of the things that, wanted to make sure that was done with this was to actually put kind of an open graded stone underneath the entire road. And then put your 53s and your more compactable stuff on. So that's, it's a little bit thicker. So that's the major difference between that. So alternative two is basically just meets the town standards as they are today, which with the smaller, it's just 53s. Underneath the roadway. This one has an added benefit of having that drainage layer on the entire thing. Has the additional foundation repair included in there as well. So we just wanted to make sure that when we say 20 years, it's gonna be 20 years, right? One of those things, it's, and that was what the Geotech recommended. That was their observation was that water trapped under the surface, where to go, but.
Looking at alternative two of lifespan.
Yeah, it's a little bit smaller pavement section too. I think the, the original one is eight.
The thicker the blacktop, the better because we need extra trucks. Heavy trucks running up and down that road all the time, hillside. That's put a lot of pressure on that.
One thing that stands out, thank you. I think the one thing that stands out is even if we spend a half a mil, will it solve the problem? Or are we gonna be back at this five years from now? Guarantee?
There's, the, that's why we want to do alternative one, because it's really the best foot forward. It addresses everything that we know about now, where water coming in from the sides. If there's a seam in there somewhere, we're gonna address it midway through the pavement section. And we are putting in eight inches of asphalt comparative, you know, five to five and a half that's out there right now, even on top of that stone and that, and that fixed foundation. So we wanted to make sure that we had it fully met. And it did, it does meet the 20-year end dot life cycle. So they did take into account those traffic patterns. The alternative two does not take those into account. This is from the Geotech provides, provided, shows that the area. One of the additional benefits is, is their belief is that with that thicker, that eight inches of pavement as opposed to your five. Hopefully they'll do maybe just a mill and fill, so you're just doing the surface repairs later on where you're not gonna have to come back in and do a full reconstruction because you have that thicker amount of pavement, holds up for a lot longer time. Seal off the top, let the bottom still function the way it does. That's kind of the bigger difference, the big difference between one and two.
Worst case scenario, we, we don't do anything because funding. Scenario that we have to deal with. What, in your opinion, you've seen that, how much life does it have? Are we looking at something that we can, we can try to encumber money for a two-year period before we have to do something or are we at?
Half to is all relative to how much pain the staff's gonna have to go through. So one of the things, I did talk to a contractor about this, they kind of know the area a little bit, and we talked about some of the issues. And it might be possible to, to run the subsurface drains in there now or sometime soon and kind of get that going. Allow the water to hopefully start to be collected and come back and do the rest of the project later, but you just kind of add cost to that kind of stuff. Based on what we saw over the winter and as the cycle goes, it's just gonna keep getting worse. The blowouts just, put it next button. Spot up, wherever you stop one, it blows up somewhere else. The pavement's in bad shape. It's ready to continue to fail regularly. The fixes are very hard because the water so, the ground is so saturated during the winter, early spring where you can't even hardly get. Repairs is staying there, right? They just kind of just keep oozing down into the earth, so.
You guys thinking? Is there anybody here from Stratford? Your name and what do you do?
Mr. President of the Homeowners Association.
Hey, Roger.
Thanks to the council for all you do, by the way. But your question to how long it will last, so last year, last winter, we basically had a minefield to maneuver into the neighborhood. And it covers Stratford Ridge and Park Ridge too. So they patched, I don't know, six areas maybe, five or six after the winter. Right now, there's probably another six to eight areas that as soon as that first snow hits and the plows come through. What happened was it dug holes all the way through the dirt. So they were, there was dirt, as the Banning rep was saying, it's mud. And it comes, the asphalt was gone and it was just holes with mud. And we're talking holes about that deep. So everybody coming in that neighborhood has got to maneuver. And the way that the patches are, it's like they're staggered. And so now the rest of the road that has not been patched is gonna fail. So now we're gonna have the staggering effect of it. So the, the answer to your question, this winter, we're gonna have huge holes after the first couple of freezes and thaw. Probably more so than we did last year because it's completely crushed basically up there now. So, you know, if it was, that's basically the entrance of the subdivision, so everybody coming in that subdivision is hitting that particular stretch of road. So we've been, I think the neighborhood's been talking about it for quite a while. And I think this winter is gonna be quite the trek to try to get to our homes back there. We would like to see, obviously something done. We understand that it's very expensive, but. You know, I don't have an alternative, but it, it was pretty dangerous last year. Because they, they actually had to come and put cones and steel plates down just to get us into the, into the neighborhood. Gonna have that same situation.
I don't think it's a case of, it doesn't need to be done or not, it needs to be done.
Yeah.
It's a case of money. Where are we gonna get the money?
That's what I was gonna say, is there's no question that needs to be.
I'm fine with, I'm, I'm fine with option.
It's long term.
Yeah.
But come back to the next meeting. I agree, we're spending the extra money to get twenty solid full year, you know. They have gone through, everybody knows a lot of people live up there. It's, it's not news.
It's been there for a while.
So that's, that's gonna be something that we're gonna have to discuss is how are we gonna be able to. We don't, don't want the road to be safe. We want the road to be safe, but reality is that's a big part of our budget.
I agree.
And this is something that's unseen, so we're gonna have to juggle things. Don't tell your homeowners association folks that it's gonna happen overnight because this is, this is big and we're just seeing it now in the dollars and for the first time. It could be a couple of months before we audition. Funding mechanism. What other crises are gonna pop up between now and then?
Do it now anyway.
Weather. Well, you couldn't do it for the weather to begin with, and this is, you know, this is the logistics of, you know, six to eight weeks. Probably gonna have to have a lot of public input on that for those people. If they're not willing to go through that pain.
No, we're, we're willing to go through the pain. It's discussed every meeting. So we have homeowners in a meeting quarterly that discuss it every meeting because it continues to deteriorate. So it's, it's, whatever we need to do to get through it is fine. I mean, we do have a secondary entrance that can be utilized somewhat as they're doing the road construction.
Sure.
So, but it, it, it's gonna be, you know, I don't know that, to your comment, that we can put this off two years. I'm not sure that it can be put off two years, just simply because of the, the way that it is.
Sure.
And then we would ask also, and, and Ray and his crew have done a great job, but we would ask that this winter, that it's really watched because the holes were pretty treacherous last year. Before they got around to cloning them and, and putting the steel plates over them, it just got, it got pretty dangerous. Because there were so many. It's just not, wasn't one pothole. It was like, you go this side and you'd hit one, then you go this side and you'd hit one. It was just.
I hear you guys barbecue pretty good up there. How many fundraising barbecues?
We're willing to do whatever it takes.
Gary Aiken Park there, just fundraise all year. Okay, well, thank you very much. Great, Banning, thank you very much for your information. Obviously, we have our staff look into this, figure out the funding. I suppose those numbers are good for you too, are they? So you're gonna stick us. So you're gonna stick us with some extra money, is that what I'm hearing? Thank you. I appreciate that. Gary, does that sound like a sound recourse for us?
Sure, absolutely. We'll go, we'll go through the Kenny drawer and see what we got.
Kenny, you're gonna have to kind of sharpen up the pencil and see what we can do and.
Could be even a case where we apply for. That's an alternative.
Really? Nothing, they just, go ahead. Exactly, sure. So we'll try to explore all of our options. Ray, thank you.
Julie, did we, we, we didn't apply for anything this last cycle, did we? Because I noticed the announcements came out. Thank you.
Alright, anything else on this? Go back to staff, you have consents? 2019 annexations, interlocal agreement, Laura.
So just when we thought we were through with annexations, right? We've been saying this past several months that we can't do annexations in 2019. Technically, that's true. We can't record any annexations, but we could process them. And we have had, since these last ones came through, a couple of requests for property owners adjacent to town that are interested in annexing. One of them needs utilities and it's kind of important. It's kind of a large agritourism business in our community. So trying to research that in a way to help them maybe accomplish their goals of getting town utilities. I remembered that in 2008, before the 2010 census, we did an interlocal agreement with Hendricks County whereby they allowed us to sign a mutual resolution that would give us jurisdiction for any property that annexed during that year. We're just, we have a responsibility for approvals, the zoning, any other designations that would be needed. And we would still record it in January 1st of 2020, but the jurisdiction would cede to the town throughout 2019. So this would enable us to go ahead and, and move forward. So I included in your packets an example of the one that we submitted that was effective in 2009. And then a draft of an example of what we could do in 2018. So I haven't obviously reached out to the county yet because I wanted to get your approval and consent to make sure this is something you actually wanted to do. And if it is, then I will reach out to the county and talk with the county administrator and see if the county commissioners would be interested. Doing the same sort of agreement they did with us. That's the request tonight.
Last on the council.
Be prepared for those situations, so.
Agreed.
There's two that we know of now. There, there may be more next year. And we, we have an opportunity to provide utilities for people that need it, particularly wastewater, so this helps us bridge that gap.
Go ahead.
Consent would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll be bringing this document back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Expenditure request. Ray Whitaker. Fine, Ray.
In my line items in the budget, there is a line for new equipment. In checking my balances, I have discovered I've got a little extra money in new equipment. In the past, the park has asked for a new mower and has been declined to help the others What I am asking the board to do is to okay a quote for 13, nine, I think it is, or something like that, for a mower to be purchased out of our new equipment for the park. The ones for Edwards, our mowers are on a three-year rotation, and I would like to purchase two mowers from them. The Kubota's for 13,000 apiece. And then that would leave us two trade-ins. We could either trade in one for 4,500 or trade them both in. My thought was to trade one in, keep one, and place it at the fire department for the fire department to use it. So we would be helping out the park, helping out the fire department, as well as us getting new, two new ones all at the same time. And I have the money in the line item to do so.
What's the total of everything minus the, minus the trade-ins? What's the total expenditure?
13, 926 minus 4,500. Something like that, Marcia. I don't have that right here in front of me. I apologize for that, but...
Now, you gave it to me the other day. I'm bringing it to my fore. So what, you got about 75,000 extra you found?
I've got about 73,000 in, yeah, in the new equipment.
You're going to spend about 39,000 for the units?
Yeah, that, that would take care of everything, Tom, yes.
So then there's left, so you're being very generous to the other divisions.
Well...
It's very commendable for you.
It's, they've helped me out, and it, it's time for me to help them.
So this money won't hurt you in any way?
No, yeah, we're, we're in good shape. That, that's why we're asking for a new building. We've got all kinds of equipment sitting outside, and the former superintendent left us in good standing as far as good equipment. We've been on a rotation, and it's just our time to purchase some new mowers. And I thought while we're doing it, we've got a little extra in the new equipment, we could do this and help two other departments at the same time.
What was the 73,000 stated for in the budget?
That is left up to the discretion of the superintendent on what new equipment that he would like to have for the department. And so far, we're in good shape.
That was against him.
Yeah.
Kenny, do you have any problem with funds for a mower?
No, we've actually checked with the state board of accounts, and it'll just be how we itemize it on the capital expenditure report for the town of Danville with the state board of accounts. No problem at all.
Will, you take a mower from Ray? Okay. Fire Department, would you be all right with a, with a used mower?
Jerry's got his hands up, wants to know when he's in line.
Who was it?
Is Rob in here?
Here.
Good. I now pronounce this purchase consummated. No. What, what's the feeling of the council? This is very generous, and it does help out a couple of departments. They get a couple of new mowers, and keep one for the fire department, and the park gets a new one, and go through mowers pretty, pretty hard because getting more stuff to mow. Imagine if you stole the mowers, plus you'd have to mow. Oh, that again, huh?
We've done that in months. With that, I will move that. We approved the expenditures for DPW. Tell me if this is the amount I came up with, 39,499,16? That's the two expenditures combined? Coming out of the accounts that are listed on the expenditure accounts.
It's new equipment account.
New equipment.
Got a motion to approve the expenditures. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor signify by saying, or further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Engagement of TAF, S&amp;H, lobbying. Hello, Jill. How are you tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President. Doing well yourself?
It's another day in paradise.
It is. I rise to speak to you regarding engagement for lobbying services. Now, the reason and rationale that this discussion first occurred was some discussions that I had with Jenny regarding a couple of different things out there. One of them being legislation which applies to your host fund. So in this last state board of accounts audit, they tried to ding you for the investment policies that you had for your host fund. As you know, the Danville is a little situated a little bit differently than most communities, and you have this revenue source in the host fund. And then you have this mechanism within the statute which allows you to invest it differently than other municipalities are allowed to invest their money. It is based on, under the statute, a population requirement. And you have to be in a certain county that has a certain population and in a town that has a certain population. Hendricks County has exceeded that population figure as an estimate. It's estimated, my guess is, that Danville will exceed that population number as well in this next census. We were able to turn the state board of accounts back basically by saying, you cannot use the estimates. You have to use the dicennial census in order to determine that for these purposes. So we were able to push it off for a little bit, but it, in this next census time period, it's going to affect Danville, and something's going to have to be done. So one of the thought processes is getting a fix where you don't have to come back every few years, fight state board of accounts whenever there are new auditors here to address the situation. So that essentially, if you qualify for it, then regardless of population growth, you remain qualified for it. But that's a legislative change. The other issue that was brought up, again, speaking with Jenny, is an issue regarding costs and fees that are collected by the county for the prosecution of ordinances and fractions and other systems. Under the statute, the way it's written, it is collected into a single fund. Then there's a formula for that fund. And the qualifying entities that receive money from that fund are municipalities that prosecute at least 50% of their ordinances within the county jurisdiction. So in Hendricks County, the town of Amo is the one who receives the entirety of that calculation. Even based off of population, there is a pro rata calculation that goes in there, but you have to be a qualified municipality in order to get into that pro rata share. Amo was the only one that received that. And it, it looks to be significant dollars right now. We're still working with the county to pull what all the funding is, what the total amount of dollars are, but we believe that there's a significant dollar amount there that is distributed every year pursuant to the formula. So there are a couple of different options that you could look there, but it's going to have to be a legislative fix as well. A change to the formula, a change to who can prosecute, because at the end of the day, it's not worth this council's time and money to hire me to come down and prosecute your ordinances or another attorney to prosecute your ordinances in county court because they're going to charge you hourly. And you go in there, and the return is going to be significantly diminished. So one of the things that we were thinking about is a possibility is when you're talking about municipalities, treating it kind of like a small claims issue. Small claims court, you can represent yourself in the prosecution of your claim against a defendant or somebody that you are alleging owes you money. And so the mindset would be, let's treat these ordinance violations kind of like a small claims issue because we're talking about a dollar amount that's below the small claims mount. And if you are able to send an employee of the town of Danville who is not an attorney but knows the issue, they are essentially representing the town of Danville, just like the small claims issue would be, without the need for an attorney to be involved. But again, that would be a statutory fix. By so doing, you would then be able to prosecute your ordinances within the county court without having an exorbitant amount of additional fees associated with that, and then qualifying then under the calculation of it. So those are the two main issues that, that brought this up. And then as we were talking a little bit more with Jenny about that and with Gary and Laura about some of the ramifications, it was brought up again about the fact that the town of Danville is the only significant town in this county that does not receive food and beverage. And it's, this is a budget year, so if you're going to consider food and beverage, this would be the year to do it or wait two more years. When you talk about food and beverage, I know the town of Danville has attempted this in the past. I am not aware of any food and beverage tax that has ever been passed in the state of Indiana that did not have a lobbyist attached to it. And the reason that, that is, you, your legislative delegates have to do their job. They have hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of bills that they're going through and working their way through. Pushing a food and beverage tax is something that needs to be constantly done with not only your delegates, but then the other delegates around the state. And so it's one that you're really going to want to have somebody involved in. So the engagement letter that we've put in front of you is kind of broken up and bifurcated into two different sections. What we are willing to do is, under the current engagement that we have with the town, it's $250 an hour for the work, which is a reduced rate for our fees. We will continue on that rate of the $250. Anne Cottongim is here. She is our lobbyist. She would be the one that is in the hallways the most, representing the town of Danville. Under these bifurcated issues, you're looking at basically with food and beverage and without food and beverage. So without the food and beverage, what we're looking at is handling those two main issues of the ordinance prosecution and distribution, and then the host fund investment statute. I put a not to exceed price on there. And the reason why I put a not to exceed price on there is for the protection of the town of Danville. Because if we're just doing it hourly, that can rack up tremendously. So it is not to say that if we do those two issues that we're going to bill you $20,000, it's to say that we're not going to bill you more than $20,000 to lobby those. If you add in the food and beverage aspect, there is a lot of heavy lifting involved with the food and beverage. So the not to exceed price to include the food and beverage tax lobbying is going to be $40,000. What I will say is, we will know early on in the process what kind of argument and case that we will be able to make for the town of Danville because we'll have to approach your legislative delegation. If your legislative delegation really pushes back and we don't think there's going to be much there, even though you've engaged us to kind of look at the food and beverage, we're not going to go to that $40,000. I mean, if it's dead early, it's dead early, and we will keep that $20,000 not to exceed price. If your delegation seems engaged and willing to take this mantle and, and see this through, it's only upon then when we actually get language into a bill that needs to be considered that we would move to that $40,000 not to exceed price on the food and beverage. Anne is here to answer any questions you may have about the whole lobbying process. She and I both will, are registered lobbyists, but she will be the one spending most of the time in the hallways. And she has a much better relationship with the legislators than I do in the hallways. I tend to make some people angry. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Anne could answer any questions if the council has any.
Anne, who would you target? Who are the key legislators that you need to...
We first need support from Representative Thompson and Senator Crane here. We have to have your local legislators in support to then go to, really, depending on if Doc Brown is back as chairman of Ways and Means, or if they're going to split the duties to Representative Bob Cherry, who is assistant chair of Ways and Means, and then to Representative Houston, who's out of Fishers. I've heard a number of things that those two would be kind of, kind of co-chairing between the budget and other fiscal matters that come to House Ways and Means for this, for this session. All fiscal matters and revenue raising mechanisms have to go through Ways and Means. We can start it in the Senator, in the Senate with Senator Crane, but it really, really is best if you start it with that House and getting that support on that. So that's exactly where we would go to, would be the committee chair, the vice chair, potentially Representative Houston right away. And I would absolutely start with your local legislators, those that are here representing you.
And we've heard in many of the years that we've worked on this, that the wishes of many of the senators and congressmen was they, they don't want to do it unless we have a statewide. And I continue to fight that with them, and I, we'd be fine with a statewide if they would just do it, but it, does that have all, any legs to it whatsoever?
A statewide bill has been filed last year even, as recent as last year. Representative Bob Cherry filed that statewide bill that did not get a hearing whatsoever. Vigo County did receive a food and beverage tax last year. Clover, the town of Cloverdale off of I-70 received a food and beverage tax a few years ago. Monroe County is another fairly new one that the council passed the ordinance, I believe, last November or December. So when you have a, a true compelling story for your need and your use of those dollars, not we're just going to dump it into the general fund, but your specific use, you have the county seat here, you want to preserve the county seat, you have wonderful parks and trails that I know you would like to, to continue to expand and link your communities, you have to have that compelling story, or no, they're not going to go to bat for you. And you have to have a unified voice here within the town staff and you as the legislative and fiscal body for them as well. So it takes everyone coming together, including us, who's representing you as a part of your team, to, to make this happen and to start those discussions.
And I would say that Anne is being much more diplomatic than I am, which is why she's better in the hallways than I am. Statewide food and beverage, I don't foresee ever passing. Heard it, talked about again and again, but there are too many people who are just simply against another funding mechanism of what they view as a tax. They view it as, despite the fact that this legislature in Indianapolis would not be the ones that actually enact the tax or enact the legislation to implement the tax, they view that as a tax that they would be putting on. View themselves as, I'm never going to raise taxes in my position. There will be people who will absolutely always fight against it. It's been on Aine's agenda in discussions. Aine has been in the hallways a significant amount of time. Never any traction.
Well, I will say that, you know, we did a, a survey, I believe, two years ago to try to get some public input on whether or not this is something that the public would embrace. And it was a 90-plus percent in favor of it because everybody recognizes that they're paying less tax everywhere they go, but not getting any of the benefit of it here. The other point was that we're paying stadium tax in our county, it goes to Marion County, and we don't even get to collect it for ourselves. So I, I personally would be in favor of this. We talked about it two years ago, hiring a lobbyist at the time. Chairman Brown said at that point in time that he thought if it was going to go through, it'd go through whether we had a lobbyist or not. He was in favor of us, he told us, but then it didn't go anywhere. We were able, for the first time in, I think, eight years, able to testify. I testified at the Ways and Means Committee and well-received, but then it never came out of committee. So I, I don't know if, I mean, there's probably more discussion to be had, but I think all three of these issues are very important to, I, I think they would all pay for themselves very quickly if we can get any of them through. I think it is imperative that we move forward and try, we've talked about this ordinance issue for five years at least. So, I mean, of all the years that we would have spent that money if we didn't, I mean, 20,000 alone would have covered that too.
Yeah, because it averages about 27,000 a year.
Right, right. So I don't know if you're ready for a motion, but I'll make a motion that we approve the engagement letter for all three.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll second. We have a second. Further discussion. Jenny, what kind of funding source would we have for this $20,000 to $40,000?
I think that we would use the host fund, of course, when they're presenting for the host, professional services, and then we can look at the general fund for the ordinance violations that is received into the general fund, non-departmental, and we could use professional services from there as well. Maybe we can transfer some money next year, but we can make it work.
What we can do on our end is, we will delineate specifically what time it's due. I should do your internal.
Food and beverage, we could look at the host discretionary fund or different mechanisms there.
$20,000 to $40,000 gamble that we can get the state to write legislation favorable Laying the groundwork, in my opinion, is probably laying the groundwork year after the next year for that, so it, I can see it as probably has greater benefits not pressed on you. Question, Jeff, doing something like that. I'm sure Jeff would be on board, and I think, but, I think we have to do something for the citizens and the future councils is to try to get something in place. I agree with Marsha, I think this is, we put a strong effort with a lobbyist to get this accomplished. That money doesn't go in the hand. AMO, AMO, I'm against AMO, but you know, I think we could, we deserve a little slice of that pie as well.
And just so you know, when you talk about that distribution, last investigation that was done, AMO prosecuted three ordinances.
$27,000?
That's great for AMO. Let's tap into that. We oughta be able to do five.
But that's what's so appalling about that calculation, and I think that's a story that we can tell when it comes to that distribution. Reordinances for this small location.
I'm not sure that one will be the hard one to get to.
I like two of the three. I'm not for a food and beverage tax.
What's your success rate? What do you feel the success rate for this is?
You know, I'm fairly new going back in the halls. I've represented you, I don't know if any of you remember me, for many years I've worked for IAC, the Association of Cities and Towns, now Aime, Accelerate Indian Municipalities. I was in the hall from 2004 through 2012. Alongside 2010, we launched the Aime Medical Trust, which you are a part of, so I've been before you a number of times discussing your health insurance and your salary benefits. So I have recently transitioned to TAF, I started there in early September to lead this new position as Director of Municipal and Legislative Affairs, growing the business because I believe in providing solutions for you, which I have for many years, and also going back in the halls, which is a real passion of mine of working with people and helping you here.
Anne, so when you talk about success rate, you can put that in a couple of different categories. When you look at food and beverage taxes in general, food and beverage taxes in general have not had a very high success rate of getting through. But what needs to happen is, there's kind of a game plan now, especially with Vigo County's going through last year, the manner that it went through. That has really worked on some of the minds of representatives. And if there's a true story to tell, they look for that story. We don't want simple dollars coming back to the community. There's a story to tell, at least that you have, and we have the framework of that already. Then you get the legislators to follow. Oh yes, this makes sense. It's not just move towards statewide through there. This makes sense. Your story here in Danville starts, we're the only ones who don't get it. This county, we don't get it. And that in and of itself is unfair. Secondarily, we are the county's seat for this, or courthouse here. We are the only ones, despite the fact that the other towns, you are trying to create squares, you're the only one with a legitimate natural square. And utilize that as a hub for your rail system, park system, to branch out to the other communities and make it truly a place in which it brings people down town. There's a story that you can tell in Danville that you can't tell in different areas. Putting that story together is gonna be the key, the biggest key is gonna get you a lobbyist. If the initial meeting with Representative Thompson and Crane do not go well, you're gonna have your answer pretty quickly on that.
We also have the highest percentage of county tax rules as well. In itself was a big talking point with Chairman Brown.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. To engage TAF for lobby services, $20,000 to $40,000, contract C$40,000 if the lobby includes the food and beverage. Is in the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries 4-1. Engagement will be signed.
Thank you.
All right, on to our last, before the department heads, town manager vacancy. Jim Stevens would like to address this issue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I may be the first one to kind of announce this, but our, Carrie Aiken, after 43 years with the town, will be retiring January 4th to be the last one. Quite a man. Have known him truly my entire life. Last four years, very professionally. Could not hold him to a higher esteem, that's for sure. He is about as decorated as you can get for what he has done statewide. So just, we could not have been in better hands for all these years, that's for sure. I learn that daily, truly, over the last four years, for sure. But of course, that has brought up a question of, what are we gonna do? We need a, we need a town manager. Like a lot of good leaders, they have had a lot of good help with them for a long time. Laura has been our assistant town manager for, I believe, about 19, 19 years, and obviously the planner as well. Could not, when I really started thinking about this, I thought about what we had with Gary, and I was like, holy smokes, how much we have with both Gary and Laura, and quite honestly with a lot of our departments, all of our departments. But with, in this particular role, to try to make this as seamless, as a transition as possible, but you still have to have somebody that has qualifications, dedication, commitment, everything. And I truly have seen it with my own eyes for many years. I don't know if we could possibly find anybody that's fit for this job, and Laura would be. Back to Gary. In Gary's letter to all of us, he fully endorses Laura. I think that speaks volumes, that I had already developed a very strong opinion, but that certainly was even more beneficial in solidifying my thought process. Also, we currently, the town manager is not working under a contractor situation. I absolutely feel going forward, the person that does take over, the town manager would work under a four-year contract, that does so many things. It gives them some room to breathe, it gives them, they're not looking over their shoulder, it gives them the ability to put some things in motion, knowing they're gonna be around to fulfill those things. So that is a caveat also to my thought as far as this position opens up. With that being said, we have discussed some things earlier, but with that being said, my personal opinion, I would actually like to make a motion this evening, that going forward, that we do, we wanna say promote, or that we do put Laura in the position to take over as the town manager, Gary retires, and that that position also be, have a four-year contract attached to it, that we could, we do not have one, we need to work with a tool on something along those, or we need to, possibly you could help us with that. Gotcha, gotcha, that's it. So with that being said, like I said, I would like for, it's just, to me, to me personally, it's just a no-brainer, with what I've seen, that we put Laura in that position, and that she is in that position, and that position has a four-year contract.
Okay. I think because we don't have a written, oh, this is verbal. Safe grounds to continue with this? You were taking notes, I understand. Are we on safe grounds to continue with his motion since it's been introduced?
Okay. So the, one answer, please. You can talk a little bit. You can start with the contract.
I'll second the motion.
I'm okay, could I ask a question? Thank you. So I'm okay with the idea of the contract being a separate issue. And so Jim has made a motion, point Laura has drafted Gary with, for 2019. That can be a separate one. Okay, and then, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to, thank you, Gary, for all your things in the short time I've known you. And I came here a couple of years ago, being a politician. Had a lot to learn when I first sat up here, started to rely on people that are in here already. I watch the people that are here, and I watch what they say. Couple instances tonight, where they need information about history. Notice quite often, Marsha, used to talk about history. Feel, you could probably go out to Tender, feel Laura is at the top of her game, make it somebody similar to her, but nobody would have the history. History's really important here. Two times tonight, history came up to those questions. So feel that if we wait, Brownsburg has an opening. Laura may go. Better things, and I think sooner we could let her know that we want her to stay. So I'm in favor of that. Laura, he goes, and Gary's going, Marsha's going. Got a couple of other people here, so it's dwindling down on the history of the town. Support Laura.
I'd like to give a couple of reasons why I, and I know that there are people that think that we're going outside of the norm to not entertain applications and bring in people to interview. However, as has been said, Laura's been here for 19 years. As Tom said, there'll be people who have, not very many people, I can't imagine, that has more institutional knowledge of municipal law than Laura does, and same with the town of Danville, history and knowledge. There's no secret that there's a few people that would think that Laura may not be the best person, and I'm not surprising her by saying that, we've talked about it. But I want you to know that people get upset with Laura because she upholds the ordinances, policies, and the rules that the town council set for her to uphold. She has to be the bad guy. Nobody likes to be the bad guy, but she sometimes has to be the bad guy, so therefore there are people that don't want her there because they wanna be able to tell people what to do. Laura has done a great job of upholding the policies and procedures and ordinances that we have set forward. If there are people that don't want to follow those rules, they're given plenty of opportunity to come and make appeals through zoning, or appearing before the town council. But I wanna make the point that, for those of people that are out there that feel like she's not the right person for the job, it's usually because they didn't get their way on something. So I just, I support Laura. She, Gary has, you know, she's worked with Gary side by side for a long time. There's been instances where Gary's had to be off for whatever reason with a couple of surgeries, and she has, we have carried through without a bump in the road. And so I think she's earned this position, and I think she is very well-qualified for it, and I agree, there are multiple positions for town managers in this state, not just Brownsburg, and I would think it would be a travesty if the town of Danville were to lose.
Any other comments?
Okay, I will make some. First of all, thank you all that have spoken in behalf of Laura. She is very well-qualified. I have spoken with Laura about this position several months ago. I am a firm believer in following our practices, okay? And it is to do our due diligence to the citizens of Danville, and to look for the best person. Not saying that Laura is not. I have told Laura that she is the benchmark. True statement, that if they're, but we also owe it to the 10,000 residents of Danville to make sure that we have the best person in that position. Four, two members here will not be here in January, and this is a very important decision because the three remaining will be on council that will be working with this person. So we wanna make sure that going forward, we have the absolute best person. That is not saying it will not be Laura. I am not one of these people that is a Laura basher. I'm saying we need to follow due process. Look back to some recent hires, where someone with decades of experience had to apply for a job, instead of just handing it to them, because of their skills, because of, because of their work ethic, but they had to apply. Think if we're going to play fair, then we have to play fair. We have to do our due diligence. I believe it would be a transparent process that would involve council members, department heads, and Gary. And by the way, Gary's still here for another five years. He's here till January 4th. He's not going away yet, folks, okay? And that is just, that is just my opinion, is that we owe it to the citizens of Danville to do our due diligence, do the proper thing, search for someone. If we, if they cannot beat Laura, Laura is the benchmark, she is... When? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of following Jim's motion of appointing Laura the town council manager, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion is carried, 3-2. Okay, on to department reports. Water, you're up first.
Thank you. The, a few things, the last two or three weeks, about seemed like every week, we always have a Monday powwow with Laura and Will and everybody, and we've always talked about, raised, brought up, said, well, may have water leak or something, well, guess what? Yeah, I jinxed, we got jinxed, so it seemed like the last three weeks, we've had water main breaks, and, and this time of year, the ground shifts, whatever, and it's just cracked. Saturday, I got a call, well, actually a text, while I was out deer hunting, the, we had water coming up on Mill Street, and guys got a hold of it and started digging, and, yeah, it was leaking, but we found we had a valve buried four inches up below the asphalt that, who knows how long that had been, but that was taken care of, and now we discovered a new valve, that was probably in, hadn't been used for 20 years. But, and then, along with that, we're doing asset management, we're finding valves that are buried in grass and everything over in subdivisions, and people just decide to cover them over or anything like that, so we're finding those, exercising those valves. Whisperwood, we found a couple out there that were, been closed for 15 years, because they've been covered over. They had eight inches of dirt and concrete, and where they just poured spoils back in on top of them, and buried them up. So Dick Wicker's doing a fantastic job with Banning Engineering, he's very thorough, he's taken, he's taken a little more time to make sure we're right. And we go out, and if we're not sure, we're exercising valves, because you can count the amount of turns on valves, to determine what size they are. We know how many revolutions there are for, per size. So that's good, so we can kind of bear fair eye things, and hopefully get as accurate as possible on the maps, on the mapping system, and do it like that. A few things that we're trying to do, like I said, knowing the rules and the stuff for the town, we're trying to, I'm working with Laura and Banning a little bit, to try to do the, on the SAO about water specifications, get that down, because it's changing all the time to get that in place, because we've got more subdivisions coming in, and more people want to develop, and we're wanting to get something, a good baseline, pretty much what I'm doing now, but we want to get it in stone, and get that down for like, when I eventually leave, that the next person there, it's there. And then that way, if somebody comes in, they don't like it, well, that's just a whole lot of too damn bad. So that's the rules. And I can vouch for Laura, that knows rules, she's laughing there. But as, as an official for 46 years, I'm kind of state rules interpreter for Indiana wrestling, I know the rulebook inside and out, and a lot of people don't like the rules, but that's the rules. And, you know, if you don't like the rules, put in a thing to try to change the rules, and, and investigate it and make it right, but you're never going to make anybody happy. But it's just, I can't help that. It's, it's just life. But, but yeah, I think it's a good decision. We work for Laura, like I say, I knew Laura before, before she worked for the town, and, and do that, through wrestling, and it's kind of full circle comes back, so we'll keep that close.
That's got to be a story.
No, I'm not going to tell that story.
Have time tonight.
All right, I'm not going to tell it. But anyway, that's all I have.
Make it the Christmas party.
That's all I have, but if anybody's got any questions, I'd be more happy to ask.
Any questions for Jim?
Anything like that, all right, thank you.
All right.
Who won the wrestling matches?
Oh, sorry. Jerry, wastewater.
I know it's been a long evening, so I'll be quick. We did have an overflow that we properly reported. I'm exploring some alternatives to mitigate it in the future, and gathering some cost, and all of my other projects are on track.
Any questions for Jerry? Jerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Department.
On behalf of the Fire Department, want to congratulate Gary on a extremely long and, and very, very prosperous career. I'm going to miss you, we've worked together a long time. Laura, congratulations. Before you, you have my report. For the month of October, we had 162 runs. We're currently at 1,571 runs for the year. I'll be happy to answer any questions on that. As far as, again, I, I don't want this to seem, other than what it is, on November the 4th, earlier this month, I started my 34th year with the Fire Department, and I'm very pleased about that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, chief. All right. Okay, Police Department.
President, Town Council members, for the month of October, our officers were on 734 runs. Of those 734 runs, those required 87 reports. There were 318 traffic stops within that 734 runs. We had three operating while intoxicating arrests, we had 37 criminal arrests, and we served 19 warrants. So it's a pretty busy, pretty much an average or above stats for our, for our officers. The written and physical agility test for police applicants was held this past Saturday. I received 26 applications, and 22 of those applicants were there to participate in the testing. 18 of the 22 successfully passed the written and the physical agility test. The test scores and applications will be reviewed, and the background investigations will begin this week. During the month of October, our officers completed firearms and state mandate training, and I continue to accept applications for the position of parking enforcement officer. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Chief.
Only comment I'd make, I think it's pretty interesting, that in 10 months, because of your concentrated patrols, we have 59 OWI arrests compared to last year's.
Guys have done a good job, they are, they are concentrated on that. And I'd also like to thank Gary, first of all, for your, your work within the Police Department, in the same position at times that I'm in, and it's, you know, it's a pretty difficult position, you know that, and at times I talk to you about that, but very thankful for the two and a half years that I've been here, and, and your position with, for town manager. I think, you know, throughout your career learning to town manager, that you've had the knowledge and the wisdom to employ who you wanted as your assistant town manager and your planner. I think you've done a, a real service for not just this town council, but the town councils in the past, where there's been continuity and fluid, fluidness for that position, and as well as you prepared her to take your place if given that opportunity, and tonight, she's been given that opportunity, and I thank you, and I congratulate you, Laura.
Thank you. Laura, you're up.
Oh, just a few items to comment on, since the last time I stood up here and gave you a report. October 24th through 26th, I went to ICMA's Midwest Leadership Institute, spent a couple days there as a follow-up. I was there the year prior, just working on leadership skills, which I hope will pay off in the long run. I've also been working on some sign permits, some of you may have seen some of them going up. Constant Conquest, which is a gym, a workout gym. The Revival Community Church, which went out next to Schaefer's. Jimmy John's, big news in town, of course. The Danville Florist has relocated their business from Washington Street over to Marion Street. And then, just to let you know, Circle K is doing a rebranding, and they're the gas station out by Walmart. So you'll see their signage change, but they're just, it's just a rebranding, so ownership is staying the same. Also, finalizing annexations, we've had that spate that, this past fall, and getting those put to bed. And then meeting with property owners, referencing those annexations that will be coming through in 2019, so getting those lined up and squared away. Plan Commission and BZA will both be meeting in December, there's a couple items on both of those. We'll have a rezoning request in front of Plan Commission, as well as site plan for Faith Baptist Church. That's kind of been going on for almost the entire year, so we're finally through our third review on their site plan. Hopefully, that'll get approved in December, so they can start breaking ground in the spring. And if I haven't referenced it, Faith Baptist Church is on the 25 acres immediately west of Four Oaks. So it was a part of the original PUD, and they got permission to have a special exception and have a church there. We also will be having preliminary plats on Camden Creek, which is the 40 acres that you just approved the PUD for, this meeting. And then also Woodland Terrace, they're actually having a preliminary plat, so those two will be coming before the Plan Commission, hopefully this month. And then long-term, we're looking at those final sections north of Four Oaks, the Colesse Annexation, and then the, the other ground that was originally part of it. Working with the traffic engineer, who's going to have to do a study, because they're wanting some access points off of 450, so they're going to have to do some traffic engineering to justify those exits. Gary and I met with our new Okra rep for this region, so he came in and made a visit and introduced himself, he's been on the job for a little while, trying to get his feet wet, so just want to introduce himself, and we had a good meeting with him. And my favorite thing, the RDC, the Redevelopment Commission, continues to meet diligently, Mike is on that, and we've got some big plans, utilizing the seed money that you authorized a couple meetings ago, so that they can move forward with looking at some areas to TIF, because the whole goal is redevelopment, and that's economic development for the community. So looking forward to working with them. Regarding your recent vote, of course, I want to thank Gary. We've been working together for a long time, 19 years, sometimes seems like two years, sometimes it seems like 40, but I've been very appreciative of his guidance and his leadership, and he knows when to let me go and turn me loose on things, and other times he reels me in, so this is not, this is not where we're going to heap a lot of praise on Gary, because we're going to save that for another date. Is it all right if we announce the date for that?
Sure.
So we're gonna, we're gonna work on a, have a committee and plan a big party for you. You have no say in it, so you just have to be there. You just have to be there. So it's going to be January 4th. Not, not that day, not that day.
Call Pam, call Pam.
Yeah, we'll make sure you're here. So more details about that will be forthcoming. And then, it's been a pleasure working with Gary and the staff. I am humbled, and I very much appreciate the kind words that you all shared. I've worked very hard for this town, and I love this town, and I want to continue to work here, and see through some of the activities that we have planned, and the growth and development. I understand it's a split vote, it's a little bittersweet, but I understand, you articulated your comments and your rationale very clearly, and I appreciate that, I would expect nothing more. So I just want to thank you for that, thank you for the vote of confidence, and I promise I will work very hard to continue moving us forward and make this the best community possible. Any questions?
The land would be next to Mayberry's, did you mention that? Does, built something on that?
There's, the RDC entertained a presentation from a developer there, so we have a few more ducks to put in, in, in order before anything can happen there, because there's going to take a lot of incentive on behalf of the town to make a project happen there.
Is there any thought of what they're going to do with it?
This particular developer is looking at doing a similar project to what was proposed before, which is first floor retail, and second and third floor, probably residential. But it's a tight space, parking's a challenge, the biggest thing is financing it. Take some participation from the town.
Laura, we, I believe we had a traffic study done at Skorkin by Tennessee in the substation, and heard anything from that?
Yeah.
Any recommendations?
He, you know, provided some information on that, did a couple of different scenarios. We met with staff and had them all review it, and talk about what their favorites were, and things that they could rule out. The next step was to get some construction estimates on what the favored scenarios would cost. But then we had this little project come up called a Public Works Building, because that won't be a, you know, that's going to cost money. It is in an immediate need now compared to that, it kind of fell down the burner a little bit.
Okay, good.
So if you would rather, I can, I can definitely bring those forward to you, but I thought, let's get through this first, and then we can look at that at the beginning of next year.
No, I was, I was just curious, because I knew that, that we had.
Yep.
And I had not heard of it.
Just, just kind of holding it for a little while, until we get through some of these other issues.
Maybe get the substation. That would be kind of nice.
Yeah, Dick Stratford, by Public Works Building, lots of things on the burner.
Heard of it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Laura? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Stormwater, Barry.
Trying to keep it short, and I want to elaborate on Gary's retirement, and Laura's becoming town manager. Now I have two bosses, so thank you very much. But, yeah, so.
Didn't you always have two?
I'm, well.
I kind of miss that, bud.
Okay, well, officially, I have two bosses.
There you go.
So I'm, I'm disappointed, but I'm happy for Gary that he's going to retire, and I'm, I'm kind of sad, because I've only got to work with him for five years, but I've known him my whole life, and he was my football coach when I was a little bitty guy, and ever from that time on, he's kept me straight. So even when he was a police officer, he's hit me up a couple times and kept me straight. So, but anyhow, I won't elaborate on that too much. Thanks, Gary, I appreciate all the time, and he's the best arbitrator I know. So I'll shut up real quick, but anyhow, I have a few projects that are lingering. One is the park, we, we've repaired it, but we've tried to, I tried to bundle all these patches, because our prices that we got were based off them doing them all at once. That's not going to work out, because the work on the square for the Henderson County Visitors Bureau is not complete. We're supposed to do the sidewalk next week, and that depends on if the crew that's working on the Visitors Bureau is complete, but we're going to go ahead and do our part, and if they're not ready, we're going to pave that, too. But the park will be paved tomorrow. And the plan is, is I don't want to put surface on it, because surface doesn't hold up very well in cold weather, and all month long, we've had cold weather, it's not been an ideal time to pave anything, but we're going to put binder from full depth all the way up, then next spring, we'll come in and mill it off and put surface on it. And that might be a suggestion for a temporary fix. At Stratford, is to dig those patches out and put a base or a binder in there to get us through the winter, which would be much cheaper than the alternative. And I believe Ray and I have talked about that earlier this year, that we may have to, the town may have to pull those out and replace them, just to get us through until the funds are available to repair it the correct way. There's also two construction sites, two developments that are under construction, they're both, they've both just moved dirt. One is Tractor Supply, and the other one is the, the substation, so basically, all they've done is moved dirt. Building permits continue, it's kind of slowed down a little bit, but I still have anywhere from six to eight inspections every day. The building, we've been working on the building, trying to get some controls, we're actually making some headway. We found a few controls that weren't getting the correct signal, which has to do with temperature, I don't know if anybody's hot in here right now, I feel a little bit hot, but the temperature sensors in here say that it's 71 degrees. So the idea is to be able to take a laptop to any station and be able to see what it's doing at that point, that's what I'm working on right now, to get the software to communicate. The hard part is, I need Wi-Fi throughout the whole building to do that. And I'll shut up, that's all I have.
Questions for Barry?
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, and last but not least, no, no, Public Works, all right, easy people, it's only a list, it's right there, we corrected it.
Seems like I've been up here a lot tonight.
Yeah, it does.
And Gary, I think there's only one person in this room actually knows what 43 years coming to work for one town is like. Congratulations. Thanks for making me the old man now. We're picking up leaves, we're got the canopy ready to turn on, and the Christmas tree will be lit up tomorrow. Everybody is complaining that we are behind on leaves, yes, we are, and no, they're not a priority to me, we'll pick them up on Saturday and Sunday after the lights are on. Congratulations. Thanks for making me the old man now. We're picking up leaves. We're, got the canopy ready to turn on and the Christmas tree will be lit up tomorrow. Everybody is complaining that we are behind on leaves. Yes, we are and no, they're not a priority to me. We'll pick them up on Saturday and Sunday after the lights are on. Any questions?
What time? What time will the Christmas tree go on? Right after, of course, after sunset?
Six o'clock.
The party is actually four to eight, Tom, but lights are at six.
Any other questions?
Yes. The lane dividers on the road, blacked out, but you put it so nicely. Get the paint a yellow line down.
Where are you talking?
Huh? On the highways. Am I there, say it right?
The roads.
Roads, yeah. Columbia.
Columbia, the ones that we paved.
What you paved?
Had yellow on those.
Those, those were never painted. Those were never painted, Tom.
They were never painted with a lane divider?
No, no.
Not a major highway.
No.
I didn't know that.
Nope. City streets are not painted.
Okay, I learned something.
Just the outskirts was and US, old US 36 had striping on it, so we put it back.
Anything else? Okay. Park.
Your council report in front of you there. Some highlights, Winterland will be fully wired tomorrow and will be running hot tomorrow. We'll be ready. Everything's good to go. Uh, Ash Tree Project, we finally finished that up last week. Uh, we're just waiting for Duke to turn the power back on in North Park. I don't know why they're taking forever. It's taking a little bit. Um, and then also thank you to Public Works for helping us with, uh, we put in some pads. We're gonna be putting some benches in, um, in the park, just our last phase of our commercial benches. And then also thanks for the mower, too. Guys love you for that. Appreciate that. Thank you to you two as well. Congrats. Um, you know, long time, long, long talks. Uh, Gary's always someone that you can lean on and talk to and get some wisdom from and I appreciate that. You know, as a young guy, sometimes I want to go, 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 but, you know, he makes me sit back and think about it a little bit and I appreciate that. So, that's all I got.
Anything for what?
What's a pool?
Hmm? The pool?
It's a pool.
Memorial Day weekend. Yeah, already.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment. Anything from public tonight? Anybody out here? Okay. Gary.
Well, you know, I'll try and keep this shit very fast, my dick. No, it's been a short 43 years. Uh, I can remember being recruited by the police chief as I was a bartender on the Northside Bar. I worked 96 hours a week. Cooked the grill, I opened the bar, I cleaned the bar and closed it. That's because I didn't have any health insurance. My, my wife was pregnant, so, you know, we, we paid off the hospital and the nurse and the doctor before she was born, but 96 hours is getting a little rough, so chief police come in, stuck his head in the door and said, "Uh, you want a job?" Says, "Well, it's being a police officer." I said, "How much a week?" He said, "40." I said, "How much you paying?" He said, "10,000." Hey, I'm your man. So a love of hair, you know, started right there with Danville. Been a lot of instances throughout the years, under, off, you're about your community. I think what I want to tell you is that you've got a great, got a great front line, those individuals, take care of this town, Danville, be with you for quite a while. They're, they're an organization that you can be proud of and that you can, you attend a, an outside event, you're representing Danville, you can pretty well tell them, "Danville is the best." Just keep in mind that Danville's a great place to spend a lifetime.
You know, Dave Ogden's smiling.
Piercy. Bob Piercy, editor of the Gazette. He's still. So I thank you and, uh, had some time to take and I probably will do that off and on working with Laura because she's got time to take. Fair enough, for the end of the year.
Available January.
I have to do that.
Okay. Laura. Jenny.
Congratulations, Laura.
Tom.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Uh, Gary has been a mentor to me for the 10 years I've been on the council and I've been to those I Act counts, those, uh, conferences where Gary was just adored by many and his level of knowledge for municipal law is just incredible. So I thank you for the guidance that you've given me over the last 10 years. Gary and I have been friends longer than we've been on the council, since I've been on the council, we've been working together and I'm sure we'll be friends for many years beyond that. Laura, I want to congratulate you as well. And Winterland starts Friday. Right, Will? Starts Friday. Um, just for everyone's information on, uh, we've changed our pricing a bit this year. It's gonna be $5 Monday through Thursday and $10 Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And the hope there is that, um, the citizens of Danville won't be so angry with all the traffic on 36. We hope to move some of the local traffic into the week and, uh, relax some of that traffic on the weekends, so.
Congratulations, Gary. Like Barry, some Little League football. Appreciate you. Best wishes to you, Laura. Uh, to caveat what Gary said, we are very lucky. We got the best department heads, uh, in the state of Indiana, much less probably the country. So I appreciate all you guys.
Jim? Well, I'm gonna hold off on talking about Gary until he actually retires because he's still got, still got five or six weeks of good work out of that man, so.
There's no limit to how many times we can say nice things.
And I'm sure, yeah, that's true. I'm sure that, uh, that there's gonna be lots of accolades and I will add to that later on. Lastly, uh, kind of selfish, I'm gonna wish my grandson Sam a happy sixth birthday and wish, uh, Joella Clark her actual birthday.